All right, Commissioners Court is back in session at ten thirty six AM. And we have one item left on the agenda, it's item number thirty-one. And that is to conduct a workshop to discuss the proposed long-leaf development project on FM four twenty-one in Lumberton. And as noted, this item is not beginning before ten thirty AM. We had held, excuse me, we had held a public meeting with the developer, Brampton Essentials. I don't have the exact date, but it was sometime back in June, I believe, at the Lumberton Performing Arts Center. And thanks again to Dr. Tipton and his team for allowing us to hold that meeting there. Excuse me? Um, if they, if their room's full, they're welcome to sit up out there in that corner. Thank you. How many? Is it just one? And there were some questions that were not answered during that meeting. And then as well, we had had a lot of questions submitted to us through emails from citizens since we had that meeting. Quite a bit of people that opposed the project that have emailed each of the members of the court. And I've tried to make sure that any of those emails that I've received that y'all didn't already have, that I forwarded those to you. And it's about sixty emails total. And so what I wanted to do today, and of course Commissioner Young and Commissioner Roberts are getting calls from their constituents daily. And I think Commissioner Kirkendall and Commissioner Cooper are receiving some of those as well, and I know that I am. Uh, we just wanted to have the developer come back in today and go over these questions with him. And ask him just to answer those questions and get that information out to the public as best we can. I know that they have submitted a preliminary flat to the floodplain administrator, which is under review. I'm not sure the status of that at this time, but I know they're working on that. And Mr. Hoffman, if you don't mind, if you'll just come on up, we'll go through these questions. And of course, if any member of the court has any other questions, we'll be sure and ask that while we're here during this workshop.
Judge, I would like to say for the record that we had over a hundred people in opposition to this. And less than five have supported it.
Yes.
I want that to be on the record.
Yes, sir, I should have probably addressed that. But out of the emails that I've received, I think I've had four or five that were in favor and the rest were either negative regarding the project. Or just some other negative emails about drainage in general. Some of, uh, just a few of them didn't have anything at all to do to the project. Mr. Hoffman, come on. Mr. Hoffman, I received the email you sent me last night where you regrouped the questions and provided that to the court. And so we have exactly what you sent to me. And if you don't mind, if you just, you have that in front of you?
I do.
You just want to go through them and we'll just address them, just like you have them.
Uh, this is my first time in court, should I address the court or address the attendees up or?
Just address us and they'll be, they'll hear your answers. Thank you.
So what we've done is grouped the, the questions, which totaled twenty-seven into several categories. Just to try to kind of keep the topics together and, and I'll go through those. The first category is roadways and access. That's our, that's our categorization title, that, that wasn't part of any of the questions. That's just, that's just, we feel like that's a good topic title. First question, what funding is the developer willing to contribute to developing highways? That will serve their development and add more vehi- add more vehicles to existing systems? And I'm just reading this verbatim.
Sure, that's what we did.
I did not edit any of the questions.
We tried to do the same, so some of the questions kind of, uh, may be a little hard to understand what's being asked. But we tried to, I tried to make sure that we put it the same way that we received it.
And, and, and there'll be some questions where we actually aren't sure what the question means based on the terms used. And, and this is not one of those, but like I said, I'm just reading these as they came to me. In addition, what new roadways and connectivity to existing roads will they build to ease traffic on existing roadways? So I would say in response, FM four twenty-one will need to be expanded by Tech Dot, that's Tech Dot Road. Uh, at some point in the future, we're, we're, we've conducted a traffic, initial traffic analysis study that's been submitted to the county. Um, prior to the point at which Tech Dot should need, will need to expand. Uh, we will add at our cost, uh, turn lanes into the subdivision. And there are several points along four twenty-one where that might occur depending on, depending on how the development unfolds. And what volumes we get to at what points in time. Uh, we'll add turn lanes and traffic signals at the new entrances. Um, we're also willing to dedicate rights of way for widening four twenty-one if Tech Dot requires that. And we're also willing to support a three eighty-one agreement or a T I R Z, which are vehicles that allow for funding of specific uh, infrastructure projects based on the tax base that is created within the subdivision. Um, and, um, yeah, that, that's basically the things that we're willing to do to support the, the highway infrastructure. Question number two. Uh, and by the way, Judge, just a point of order, uh, do you want me to pop, to ask for any feedback? Uh, or am I just planning to?
I would just like going to the next one, and if any member of the court has any comments they'd like to make, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question number two, why is a cut-through necessary to Keith Road? So in our public meeting on June fifteenth, we did, uh, we did show a conceptual master plan. And it did show a, a connection near to Keith Road. That's, that's based, uh, on, sorry, Temple Road. Temple Road goes through, actually borders or goes through our property from FM four twenty-one all the way to Keith Road. Uh, the conceptual plan was five thousand-ish acres in the map, not very detailed. It showed a connection to the southeast of our property. And some people perceive that to mean a connection to Keith Road. In the conceptual plan, all we did was connect back to Temple Road shortly before it left our property and connected to Keith Road. That's purely a conceptual plan. Uh, if, that's really a county question. If the county, you know, we, we included that in our conceptual plan for a couple of reasons. Uh, in, in case the county asks for additional emergency exit relief. In the case of flooding overtopping Keith Road and trapping those residents. Um, we're not planning to develop Temple Road independently. We don't own it, it's, it's, it separates us from our neighbors. It may get developed over time, but if it doesn't, then we're going to build our roads. And if the county wanted to use one of our roads to help residents escape when they're trapped in Keith Road, then we would be happy to do that.
I believe that question comes from, um, and I forgive me, I don't remember the name of the road back there towards the end of Keith.
Ridge Press.
It looked like y'all were going to connect to Ridge Press across somebody's property. And that, that landowner was a little upset about it because no one had contacted them about it. And I think that question may come from there. So the county has not asked you to build a road to Ridge Press or anything like that. And, and the conceptual plans that you submitted during your presentation at our public meeting in June is just that. It's a conceptual plan that, uh, it's an idea that you have, but it's not a done deal, is that correct?
That's correct.
And just for the record, has any member of the court discussed any eminent domain, uh, taking anybody's property to build a road through there? Okay. I, I just wanted to get that on the record as well, because that is some of the talk in the community is that the county's going to take that man's property and build a road through there. And that's not even been discussed at all whatsoever.
No, uh, and just, if, if for what it's worth, we don't need access to Keith Road for our development. Uh, we would, we would oblige the county if they requested connection, but we, we don't need that.
Okay.
Um, and I will mention one other thing, just, just to be completely clear about the conceptual plan. There was another connection on the southwest corner of our property. That was going through a private tract owned by Pike Investments. Some people here might know Vanelle Club, she, she is the daughter of one of the partners in that, in that. And we have had conversations with her about their interest in, in having connectivity to four twenty-one. Uh, I believe that's a purely private matter, but I just wanted to mention that other connection would be, uh, that was on the map, that's what that was about.
All right, thank you.
Question number three, will this development cause the county to have to widen Keith Road, taking up more of homeowners' driveways, ditches, yards, et cetera?
I would just answer that and say.
Like I said, we don't, we don't need to connect to Keith Road.
Thank you.
Number four, Callahan slash Temple Road is a county road that is insane to upkeep now due to the sinkage and unstable ground. How can anyone claim to be able to make that road a cut-through with the new traffic expectations?
I think you kind of covered that already.
Okay.
I have a question.
Unless anybody disagrees, Commissioner.
It's not in my precinct, but I've heard a rumor that y'all set culverts on Callahan Road, is that correct?
We set a single culvert to drain, uh, a borrow pit, dirt pit that we have been excavating.
And did y'all get county's permission to do that?
Of course.
So you worked with the commissioner in order to get that done?
That's right.
Is that true?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I misunderstood it then. I had heard that y'all set the culvert without getting permission from the county.
Yeah, we haven't done anything without getting permission from whoever is required, yeah.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yes, sir. Okay, so are you, are we satisfied with number four?
Yes, sir.
Number five, oh, sorry, now we're switching to, so that concludes our roadways and access group of questions. Um, the next group we have is two questions we fall, that falls generally under emergency services. Question number five, what funding and resources is the developer willing to use that will help alleviate the additional burden on emergency services and schools in the, sorry, in the community? Um, uh, so I would say that we're willing, we're willing to provide a site for emergency services within our acreage for free. Um, the long-term taxable value that will be created in our development will, uh, fund the emergency services requirements that we expanded requirements. And I would just, I just, uh, point out to the court that, you know, the county is pretty rural, right? It's pretty spread out. That's expensive for emergency services to deal with that kind of development. Our development's going to be quite dense, so, and, and our taxable value will be, will be fairly high. So I think from an efficiency perspective, that's not what we're managing for. But I just think as a, as a course of the other factors that we're, that we're, uh, bringing to bear in this development. The, there'll be plenty of funding and it will actually be spent better because it'll be, you know, we're, we're all tight, it's all tightly packed in there. Rather than having to drive down, you know, long roads to get to somebody's house, if that makes sense.
What are your price points on your housing? What are, what are you, what do you say your minimum and maximum?
Well, that's a little difficult to say right now because I don't know what the price of lumber is going to be next year, but.
If it stayed the same?
If it stayed the same, uh, I'll, I'll just say that generally we'll be in the three and four hundred thousand dollar range is our, is our price points in our first phase. But, uh, we've got a lot of phases potentially. And we could be talking acre tracks, gated sections, smaller tracks. Um, I think, I think the point is to provide what the market needs. Uh, it's, it's difficult as a producer to set your price until the market to come pay it. We have to ask the market what price they're looking for, what product they're looking for, and we try to provide it.
Correct.
So three to four hundred thousand dollar range.
You made a statement just now of gated sections, could you explain or define that?
No, I can't.
Will they be?
It's purely conceptual.
Will they be property owner associations like Wildwood?
Our first phase is intended to have a homeowners association. I don't know about Wildwood and how they run their.
If it's gated, would it, would it have a gate attendant?
I'll just say that the gated community is conceptual. And I have no particular plans about a gated community and can't discuss any details because it's purely conceptual.
Okay, just so you know that if that happens, then you get no access to county services.
Okay.
Because that's the way Wildwood is. If it's a gated community with a mangate twenty-four seven, then you're private. And y'all have to take care of everything.
Alex? And the judge might answer this, I, I'm not sure, I'm Sarah County Attorney.
He's on, uh, he's on, uh.
Gated communities, do we have to approve the plaits?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But in phase one, there's no gated community in phase one, correct?
I have, I have no idea if we will ever do a gated community, it is possible.
Okay. I would have your attorney research like what Wildwood's going through.
Okay.
Because we're restricted on our end based on the rules that they have adopted for their community. And, uh, so they get, they get no road and bridge services and what have you because it's a private property owner association.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the E S D, have you been in touch with the fire chief in Lumberton?
I have not. Anybody in touch with fire chief? No.
Okay, that's something that you'll, you need to get in touch with them as far as any placements for hydrants or anything like that.
Okay.
They do have codes, so, um, that's just something you'll need to follow up with them about.
Okay. Are we in touch with fire guys?
Yeah, that's something that'll, when you look at the approval process with the city of Lumberton, that it'll, we'll be in contact with them. We're, we're submitting full plans to, uh, to Lumberton in addition to.
They're s- they're separate from the city?
They're separate from the city, it's an E S D, Emergency Services District.
So you need to speak with Jeff McNeil in Lumberton and follow up with him?
Okay, thank you. Uh, question number six, also emergency services, can our emergency services handle the additional population that will result from the project? Uh, I think I might have answered that in the previous one. The, the funding will be there in the form of taxes, uh, to support the additional population. So that's all of the emergency services, if there's no questions about that, I'll move on to schools. The next topic is schools, specifically Lumberton Independent School District. Number seven, can our schools support the influx of students created by this project? Every school district is required to provide for the students within this, oh, sorry, this, I'm, I'm answering, excuse me. So every school district's required to provide for the, uh, students within the boundaries. The school district receives additional funds for each student enrolled and they add the law and taxes. I mean, all, all the residents in the subdivision will get taxed by the school district. That goes to support the school district and the services it must provide to the students.
Now, they're, they're, they're typically going to be at least a year behind. You'll sell the house, the house will be assessed on the next January, as far as probably it'll be assessed maybe in the middle of the year. And, uh, they'll have to pay an escrow for, for that part, and then it'll be reassessed. And so I think maybe just the point is being made that the cost to the school district will be upfront before it's reimbursed. And just to make aware of that.
Okay, that would be the same for any development, any house being built, correct?
Yeah, but I just think there needs to be clarity on that.
Number eight, will the drainage affect the existing schools? In a word, no. Uh, number one, and this was, this was explained in detail at the June fifteenth public meeting. Our development will actually reduce the storm flow effects on the watersheds. And in any case, our development is downstream from any existing schools. So, uh, I don't, I don't, I think the short answer is there's no relationship.
And this may be a question more suited outside the schools, but I think on Cooks Lake Road, you may have to refresh my memory because I'm not that familiar with that area. But the problem was not the day of the event, it was the two and the three days afterwards of the event that the water was backing up. And I think the major concern was with the release that is going to take place, that it would, uh, put a larger stress on that day two and day three. Because the people on those roads that live in those houses that are legacy, uh, citizens, been here fifty years, that they're okay in the event. But it's the third day they're having to pack up and leave the house because the water has backed up and come in. And I think what I heard, that was the largest concern is on the days after the event. What type of release is this going, or what kind of effect will this release have on the day two, day three beyond for the residents that are there now?
And, and you're not, you're not concerned specifically about a school right now, you're talking about Cooks Lake Road residents or other residents?
Yeah, and that's what I said, it may be more suited, but I had it on my heart.
Yeah. Yeah, um, so we, we, is the drainage study the best vehicle to make sure?
Yeah, we'll address that under the drainage.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we have a, the longest section is drainage, uh, of the questions, um, uh, so we sort of save them for a little bit later. But, um, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about how that works. Uh, we, we, we know what you're talking about, we're aware of it, we've addressed it, and we will, we will make it better. So I'll get to that in a few minutes if you'll, if you'll hang in there for a second. Question number nine, will the current, uh, Independence L I S D bond project be able to handle the additional families comfortably? If the capacity is too tight, too tight, the students as well as the teachers will be at a stressful disadvantage. This will cause lower quality of teaching and learning by no fault of theirs. Um, I would actually defer to Superintendent Tipton to answer this question. I, I'm not familiar with how the I S D would plan to address the expansion. So that's, if, do you want to let Dr.?
Dr. Tipton, do you have anything you want to say, or are you just here to listen?
I'm, I'll be happy to speak. Um, we are, we're going to serve, we're going to give quality education to every single student that walks in our door. Uh, we are watching the growth closely, uh, within this potential project and then outside of the potential project. So, so for us, we're going to do whatever it is that we have to do to serve kids, whether it's a hundred or minus a hundred or plus a thousand.
Thank you.
Uh, the next section of questions, uh, we put under the category of Lumberton mud. Question number ten, who is paying for the expansion of Lumberton mud? Uh, so, uh, the, the mud's not being expanded. Uh, the, the mud boundaries are fixed and our development is sort of encased in what's called a defined area. So it's kind of a mud within a mud. So, um, the, the citizens in the defined area are assessed a, a separate ad valorem tax that pays for the, the mud infrastructure, this water sewer infrastructure that gets installed.
So I have a question about that.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just going on scuttlebutt and rubber. So there had to be an election to be included in the mud, correct?
Uh, well, I think you might be referring to the certification of the defined agreement that our defined area has with the mud.
Okay, can you explain that a little bit?
So the mud has taxing authority. And the defined area within the mud has a separate taxing authority. And it's, it's administered by the existing mud, okay? So we're, we're in a mud within the mud.
So you're your own water district?
Um, no, no, we're, we're a defined area, I'm sorry, mud within a mud was in air quotes. We're a defined area.
Okay, so it'll still be a Lumberton mud jurisdiction?
We are within Lumberton mud, we are a defined area within the Lumberton mud.
And there had to be an election to be included in the Lumberton mud, correct?
Right, in order to assess an ad valorem tax on the residents within the defined area, we had to have an election to certify that.
Okay, and so.
Or vote for it, whatever that's called.
So the rumor is the developer moved a citizen onto the property and had a hundred percent vote because one person voted to be included in Lumberton mud. Who I understand will have the expenses upfront to provide utility services to the community, is that correct?
No.
Okay, can you explain that?
The developer pays for everything upfront.
Okay.
That, yes, we had, uh, we, so in order to have an election, there has to be a resident. And there were no residents on the property, uh, when we bought it. And so we needed to establish a residence. So we established a residence and, and found a resident that wanted to occupy that residence. And they voted yes in the election for the proposal. And that is the state law and we followed all of the rules and regulations.
So were there water and sewer on that property? Did y'all put in a water well and septic or aerated system when you moved a citizen out there?
We had water and sewer, I mean, I, if you want to get into specifics of how, what kind of water and sewer system, yes, we had water and sewer.
Well, we're just trying to make sure it was a legitimate person living out there. And not just a trailer house or something put out there that didn't have access to services and no one actually lived in there.
Someone actually lived there, they had water, sewer, and electricity, you know, dry, a dry residence to live in. Uh, I'm not sure what you mean by.
Well, some, for some developers, that seems unfair, who cannot get water and sewer. And I understand that moving one person out there satisfies the law. We're elected officials, you're going to build and be gone. We're going to represent the people who are here for the rest of our time in service, however long that is, okay? So, uh, when one developer doesn't get the same shot as another developer, it causes a frustration to us. And so there's been a lot of rumor and innuendo on how that election went down. For us, for me, who serves on this, uh, Commissioners Court, it's not a very good, uh, pleasant discussion when you're trying to eat your lunch and a citizen feels like they've been, uh, hammered because of one person's vote.
Okay.
So, and then developers feel the same way because y'all are all invested money, whether it's a half a million or multimillions. And then depending on who you are, you quantitate that, if you have multimillions, it's not a big deal. If you're an individual and you invest five hundred thousand, it's a big deal. And so we have to continually deal with that fallout. And that's, that's just my question because of the innuendo that is proposed by the public. And today, we live in a social media world and things don't have to be accurate or true to be perceived as true. And so, uh, the unfair advantage to other developers? And then whether or not someone actually really lived on that property and if that property was functional.
So I, I don't know how to address the claim that there's some unfairness to other developers. Uh, I, I think that's kind of complicated to answer that one. Um, that, that would require more facts if I was to offer a response. Um, as I understand it, the mud is required to provide water and sewer service to, um, people within their district. And so I don't know about developers who claim they can't get water and sewer. Um, we're going to pay for all of the infrastructure. The mud is not on the hook for anything. The mud, we, we get paid back for our upfront investment through bond issues that are supported by the ad valorem taxes that I described a minute ago that are strictly within the defined area. If you don't want to pay the tax, you don't have to move into our subdivisions. So we're not burdening anyone but ourselves. Uh, as far as other developers, I, I really can't speak to what their certain situations are, I, I'm not familiar with what you're describing. The person, we, we, we did and will always do everything by the law and follow every rule strictly. The resident that was on our property was a legal resident of our property. We got an address from the, the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission. We got water, sewer, electrical, a residence established. Everything was by the book, as the law prescribes.
Did that person have purchased, did that person have to purchase that property? Did they have to rent that property or did y'all?
He was renting it.
Or did y'all give him that property or let him live there for a while?
He was renting it, he was renting it.
Can I ask you how much he paid?
I don't recall.
Okay. So just going back to question ten, I, I think if I live on Keith Road, I'm just wanting to know, are my taxes going to go up? My Lumberton mud taxes, are they going to go up because of this development going in, you know, a couple hundred yards from my house? I think that may be where the question comes from.
Uh, oh, sorry, is this the question I was trying to answer and I did wrong, is that, okay. Um, so it, yeah, the, the way you phrase it, it doesn't, does make it sound differently, so thank you. Uh, it, it's, it might be worth mentioning that probably everybody else's mud taxes will go down because of this development. That's not my decision to make, but the mechanics of it, there'll be a lot more money and tax base brought in from, by this development that will allow the mud to amortize their costs more efficiently and lower the tax rate, the mud tax rate that all members of the mud, all citizens within the mud pay. We're talking about two different taxes. The mud has taxes today, uh, and like, that's how they run their business, right? Everybody within our, our defined area will pay that tax, but they'll also pay a special defined area tax because we have to bring in all that infrastructure that doesn't exist, okay? It, it's no different than if, if we didn't do the defined area and the mud had to bring in all that stuff because that's their duty, right? That's what they're supposed to do is provide water and sewer services to citizens within their district. This is a more efficient kind of front-loaded way to do it. Uh, maybe efficiency's the wrong word, but it's a front-loaded way. We pay the money upfront and then we get paid slowly over time through the ad valorem taxes on the bonds issue. Does everyone understand that one? Uh, number eleven, is, I think maybe I just answered, uh, that with the previous answer. If this project is not approved, who will be responsible for paying the mud bond? Will this fall back on the citizens of Lumberton? And, uh, my, my response to that was a question, I'm not sure which bond is being, is being asked about, so.
Well, if nobody moves in out there, there is no bond, is that correct or no?
There'll be no bonds for the defined area.
Okay.
Because that only happens if there's assessed value on which to place taxes to pay back the bonds, right? So all that money, all that, the. So all that money, all that, the bonds don't happen until we put all the money in the ground and get the rooftops built, people in their homes paying taxes. Until that tax base exists, we don't get paid back and no bonds get issued.
Thank you. Will y'all be the bond requester, or will Lumberton mud be the bond requesting?
Mud?
Lumberton mud will issue the bonds, and developer gets reimbursed once the bonds are sold.
Is, uh, Rob Starr on the line?
Yes.
Anybody familiar with Lumberton mud in here? From what this gentleman's saying, and he probably doesn't have knowledge of this, but if I understand it the way he's saying it, the citizens that live down there in the mud district, if they can do a bond for this development, they can have a drainage district inside their mud. Or anybody ever thought about that?
That's a good point.
No, has nothing to do with you, but I just brought that up to the citizens.
It is in their description to do drainage.
Now, that's, that's more taxes, but that, that sounds to me like a good avenue to pursue.
I like it, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
All right. So, the next section is generally titled Drainage and Detention. Question number twelve, to what extent is the developer willing to partner with local government to enhance drainage systems that not only affect their development, but the community as a whole? And, uh, in response, I'd say, as we explained at the June fifteenth public meeting, we are providing, i- in, in our first phase, and actually it's not our first phase, uh, if, if anyone can recall that, it's in that meeting, we, we kinda cat, we kinda carved out an area we call our northeast drainage area, it's about five hundred and fifteen acres. It would have something like six, seven, eight different phases according to the plan that would fit within it. So it's, it's ten, twelve years worth of development. But within that, that first area, the physical area, we are detaining double what we are required to detain. So, that, that's, that's a major part of what we're willing to partner with local government on. Um, we're open to other options in, in, uh, uh, that, you know, may, maybe creative options that come up. But the first thing we can control is the stormwater runoff from our property, and we are over detaining it by fifty percent. We went through those numbers at the public meeting, um, I can access those numbers if you need me to today, but, but we're going above and beyond what is required. And I would say we're going way beyond what any other developer has ever done in this county.
And on your drainage, you're, you're having vegetation in your drainage route for soil retention and all that? I'm trying to remember what y'all showed us in Lumberton, and I can't remember.
We have a detailed drainage study and all that's in there, I'll just say, we're, we're doing best practices and whatever is required by law, for sure. Uh, as far as where are we planting grass, I, I don't know that I'm that familiar with the, the plan or-
I can't remember it.
I, I do have a question, well, you said, uh, and I understand you're talking about the drainage off of your property. That's the water that hits on your property, is that the water that's coming to your property from up north of you that's gonna be moving through your property too? Or is that just the water that's on your property? Because that's, the water that's gonna be coming to that property is a very, very vast amount. It does it every time. I saw a picture, I saw a picture last night, somebody posted it, uh, behind Lumberton High School. The road behind Lumberton High School that goes around the school was c- covered with water. That's all water that goes to you. How are y'all gonna detain that water? Y- are you gonna make that water stop? Is that gonna back up? Is that gonna be upstream from you? I, I realize that you're gonna stop the water on your own property, so are you gonna be stopping the water from flowing from above you down?
So you're talking about water that's already in the watershed?
That's gonna be coming towards you. You're gonna have, you're gonna have a lot of water coming that way, it always does.
Yeah, in the public meeting, you know, you might recall, we had a graphic near the end of the slideshow that showed the wa- the, the major watersheds in the area.
Right.
And you could see, you could barely see our five hundred and fifteen acres on the map. It was so insignificant as a part of the overall watershed. So for eons, water has been flowing past this property and will continue to flow past this property, and our intention is not to affect that flow. Our intention is to mitigate the impact, the, the introduction of new water into the watershed from our property.
But you're saying the water doesn't flow across that property?
Well, it flow, it flows-
If you wanna answer that, yeah, and without the exhibit that we had, it's kinda hard to see this, um, but what you're talking about is Boggy Creek and-
Well, it's not just necessarily Boggy Creek, Boggy Creek is, is where the water flows into.
Yeah.
You've got water coming from up north, literally sheeting down that way. And you can, you can, you can go across the road from y'all to the backside of Lumberton's park. Uh, last week, was it last week we had the big rain? That hall, all that's flooded back there. All of that water is coming across y'all and will come across our property, it's done it for years. Everybody that's lived down there knows this, and it sheets all the way across, and it eventually does end up in Boggy Creek. But the sheeting form of it is spread out. So now you've got all the water, you're talking about the water that's hitting on your property when you're talking about, uh, you're gonna detain the water that's on your property. But what you're not talking about is the water that's coming to your property, and it's coming. It's, I mean, you're not gonna stop it from coming, other developers have found this out. We've watched it, I've watched it for years, come across four twenty-one, above where you're, where you are. It's coming and it's gonna keep coming. So are you gonna detain that water, are you gonna stop that water? What's gonna happen with that water that's coming? Is it gonna be forced back itself up? Is it gonna back up into neighborhoods up into Lumberton? What's it gonna do? And that's a lot of this questions, that's a lot of where these questions are going. You know, yeah, Boggy Creek is the outlet, it's the ditch, if you wanna call it that. And when it's full, the water can't go anywhere, and it just starts sheeting and backing up. It did it the other day, I watched it, went over on Creekwood, you could look out across Creekwood out to, to y'all's property. It's, it's a lake out there, it was flat water. All that water has to make its way to Boggy Creek and down Boggy Creek. When Boggy Creek's full, that water sits there. How are you gonna detain, once that water is there, you're gonna have the water above you still coming, and it's gonna keep coming. How are you gonna stop that from happening? You can't. And better still, are your, are your retention ponds gonna hold water all the time? Are they gonna be like little lakes? So now you've got water coming into, are you a fill, a fill, a lake that's already filled? Is this gonna be a dam process that's gonna release water further downstream? Is it gonna back it up? So now it's gonna release a whole lot of water when now Pine Island Bio is backed up, the river is backed up, Boggy Creek is backed up, and there's no place for the water to go, so guess where it goes? It goes, spreads out across everybody's property down south. Yeah, there's a lot of things y'all haven't considered. I've sat there and listened to y'all, I mean, engineers have great ideas. But being, being a resident down there like I have been for almost all my life, you look, I look at all this, I've seen it. I just don't know how, I don't, I don't know how it's gonna work. And you keep saying, oh, we're gonna detain this amount, we're gonna, you know, hold this amount back. But you're still, you've got to, you've got water coming from Lumberton that's gonna be coming, and it's gonna be coming from Coons. It's coming from ways away. And once everything backs up, it has nowhere to go, it spreads out, and that's where the flooding starts. So, you know, that's, that's my question. You're talking about the water on your property, and I understand that by law, hey, you're, you're doing what you're supposed to, the, your surface water on your property. But you've got water coming to your property that y'all aren't accounting for.
Have y'all done a downstream study from your property, uh, on Boggy Creek to Pine Island?
Can you reset the question?
Have you done a downstream study from your property on Boggy Creek to Pine Island?
So the drainage study that we prepared did make analysis points on Boggy Creek, and we showed no impacts immediately upstream or downstream. We didn't do extensive models to kind of model the rainfall, but we did analysis points on those to account for upstream and downstream impacts.
Was that done by an expert in hydrology or just by an engineer?
It, so, everything required to be designed and approved by a professional engineer. And so he does specialize in hydrology and was a subconsultant that we retained. And that was in the report that we submitted.
And just so you know, the nature of our passion as commissioners, we have served through the wettest consecutive years in our county's history. And it's a problem. And it would be nice if we had a hundred against and a hundred for. We've not seen that on this project. And our constituents are demanding to be protected by their court because it's been wet for a long time, we've not dried out. And so just so that you understand our passion, and it's because those that we serve are very passionate.
Thank you, I do understand-
They are scared, they're scared, that's where this comes from. People are scared, some have flooded multiple times, a lot of people only flooded the one time during Harvey, hopefully that never happens again, but chances are it could happen again, and so that's where this is coming from, people are scared.
I do understand.
And this big project, you know, that's being talked about, just scares people even more, and so we are the, the barrier, I guess you would say, between-
And they're both-
Some people refer to it as getting money wrapped in, and the, the people that have lived in Lumberton, you know, for seventy-five years, and they're worried about getting flooded again. Yeah, for instance, you know, we were caricatured this week on social media, and so were y'all, by a local attorney. And so everyone on this commissioner's court was, was a caricature on a social media post, so just so that you're aware, that, that, uh, we're being made fun of, you're being made fun of, and this whole process is very stressful.
Well, I, I still haven't signed up for Facebook, so I'm not-
Well, you should.
Really into-
No, get in the boat with me and put your fish in boat in the water. Sign up, seriously.
I, I sent in my application, and I'm just waiting to hear back, but, uh, I, I do appreciate your position, I know you're doing your job, and I know it's stressful. Uh, as a developer, we are sensitive to that. We don't have to go beyond what is required by law in our detention plan, that was my imperative to my engineering team. I wanna go above and beyond, we wanna set a good example. If every developer before and after us planned to do what we are going to do, the situation in the flooding area would be much better. So that may be a question for other developers. We are going, we are doing more than any other developer has ever done in this county, I'm sure. And that's all I, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's hard.
Let me finish, and, and that's really all we can do, and to speak to Commissioner Roberts' point or concern. And I made this point in the June fifteenth public meeting, uh, and that was the, that was the point of that big slide that showed how, let's say insignificant we are in the overall watershed. I, I can't stop flooding in Southeast Texas. What I can do is make my impact on that theater smaller, I can improve it. And if somehow every other development did the same thing, it would be better. I don't, I'm not saying it would prevent flooding, it would make things better. So you nibble, you nibble, you nibble, I mean, I, I, that's all I can do, I can't prevent flooding. You're talking about the water that's coming from Coons? I, I, I don't know what I'm supposed to do with that, I, I, we can control what we can control.
I understand that, and, but I think, I don't know if you understand what I was saying. That property for years has been a filter, been a filter, everybody knows this, everybody's ever lived down there, everybody's ever hunted down there, people who have walked through it after a big rain, people who know that property, you can say it's, you know, elevation this, elevation that. I can tell you now, it's a mud fest. And the other day after it rained, the section of road down there that I worked on, uh, was, was just a mud pit. The, that's where the water came across, it wa- it washed all out, it was horrible. It's gonna keep coming, the water's coming. Now, you're gonna say, oh yeah, well, by our subdivision rules and regulations, we're, we've gotta look at the water that's on our property. But what you're not looking at is the water that's coming to your property, and it's coming big time from up above you. And it's gonna keep coming, it's done it for years. I mean, it's, it did it way before I was born. Uh, there's reasons other people never even looked at developing that property. We've got large developers, uh, Mr. Boykin bought tons, tons of timber property and never once thought about buying that property. You got Hawkins developer, you got, you got developers down there that never even looked, suddenly you bought it. Nobody else has bought it, one guy bought into it, and he saw it after a while, it flooded every time he turned around. The water sheeted across the property, it's gonna continue doing that, you can dig big holes all you want, but the water's gonna be coming from the north. If you have these holes filled up with water, when the water gets there, you're gonna have to release that water into Boggy Creek, which is already gonna be swollen and full, because by that time, like Wayne said, three days later, the Naces is backed up, Pine Island's backed up, water has nowhere to go, and it's gonna start spreading out, and it flat spreads out, it comes across Creekwood, comes across Park Road, comes across Top of Trail, it comes across all those roads going across the rolling hills, all that, I've seen it, lived it, it's there. It's not gonna be anything you can stop, even though if you say, oh, we're doing this for retention, we're doing this for detention. If you s- if you stop it, if there's stuff there, if it's like a dam that blocks that water coming from the north, it's gonna eventually have to go somewhere. If it's not backing up into Westwood or, what's, what's the one that flooded down this last storm? What was the, something Heights, the Heights, in, in Lumberton? The water backed up in the Heights, new subdivision.
And this is from Boggy Creek?
Yeah, it's all backed up, it can't get out, it's already full. So the more you compress it, or the more you try to compact it into Boggy Creek, the more you're gonna flood the people downstream. There, there's no, there's no getting around it.
Thank you, we're, we're not, not compressing or compacting anything in Boggy Creek. Uh, we're, again, if you, if you follow the, the drainage study, you'll see that we're reducing the impact on Boggy Creek.
Well, let me take you back, let me take, while you're saying that, but let me take you back to what you said in the meeting. And, and it showed it, I think, and, and I may be wrong, I may, I may even tap Alex for this. At one point, it's like, I, I won't give a number, a hundred going into Boggy Creek, but now y'all are fixing to put three hundred into Boggy Creek. Am I correct on that, Alex? That's more water, one hundred to three hundred's three times the amount of water fixing to hit Boggy Creek. That's y'all's own, that's y'all's own plans, that's y'all's, and, and what you said in the meeting. So these people, these, but let me say, these people here that live there, I, I know these residents, they're my voters, they're my, they're my constituents. They're concerned because of what that was said. You're talking about, you, you, you're saying one thing and then saying another. And, and I'm gonna go back down on something else. Whenever you say one thing, don't think these people, that you, you're, you're acting like these people are old dumb country hicks, and they're not. These are very smart people. These are people who, who, who are college graduates, who have worked all their lives in great jobs and, and had made homes for themselves, and they've, over the last five, ten years, have seen a steady increase of water coming to them. Now granted, like Chris said, we've had a horrible last six years over water, it, it's been raining since twenty fifteen. And I, I don't see it stopping, I mean, the we- weather's changing. But the more, the more that's built above them, the more water they see. And I don't blame them for being, you know, concerned enough, so I am, I live down there. I've watched the water back up on my street and cross my street. It's happening, it's, it, you know, it, it never really did this before, and all of a sudden, we're getting it on just little minor rains. And when I'm talking to minor rain, I, I, when was the last rain we had, was it last week that we had that g- rain? It was backed up everywhere down there, Boggy Creek was up to the bridges. And it was not a ten-inch rain, it was not a four-inch, it was, it was a four-to-five-inch rain that put it up to the bottoms of Boggy Creek where it used to take a ten-to-twelve-inch rain to do that.
And just so, you know, say something. Y'all are the first ones-
Can I just, sorry, can I just?
Let me say this real quick, y'all are the first developer that we're going through this with because people are tired of it. So it is a process for y'all, but it's also a process for us. I would expect any development in that area to go through exactly what you're going through at any time they get ready to develop property. So again, it's not personal. As Commissioner Roberts said, these people are very smart people, when y'all give your presentation, they can download it or print it or get a copy of it. They're retired, they have weekends, they get on their buggies, they go ride, they go walk, they go look. They, they make phone calls to their friends who are also engineers and who are very smart people. And they come back PO'd because something's not adding up. We become the coffee filter, you are the coffee, we're the filter, and the pot is the residence. And what they want to know is they're getting good coffee. And so the political stress is put on us because we are their voice. And so with what Commissioner Roberts is saying, when y'all release those studies, you will have good, honest, prudent people who do their own research and ask their own questions. And we live in a democracy where engineering firms can disagree. What we know is, if you have enough money, you can find a firm that will agree with what you want to say. That's the debate that probably none of us want to be in, but it is the debate that we have, is that right?
I agree.
Just to clarify, the numbers in the slide-
Just to clarify, the numbers in the slide presentation, the existing flow in Boggy Creek from this five hundred fifteen acres is seven hundred and twenty CFS.
Anybody that's gonna speak will need to come up to the podium. So please do that.
And so that was in the presentation. And uh, what it will be after the development is three hundred and fifty-one. So that's a reduction of about fifty, really of about fifty percent of the total amount.
Seven twenty to what?
Seven twenty to three fifty-one. And that study.
Cubic feet per second?
Cubic feet per second.
But is that, is that only the water coming off of the, the property that's gonna be hitting the property? That's my question because the, that, that's not the water that's coming downstream to you, which is gonna be even bigger.
If, if you would like us to detain water that's coming down Boggy Creek, all you have to do is put that in the response. We've submitted the drainage study, which is done by an independent drainage engineer. Submitted it to the county, to the city. County consultant reviewed that, you know, came back and said, it's a great study. You guys are doing, you know, you're, you're reducing the water, you know, much. You're doing more than what's required essentially. But, you know, there are creative solutions that, you know, we can only control our property. We can't do things on other people's property. But you guys can recommend to us something that might be a bigger picture solution. And we have, I mean, we, whatever your ideas are, we'd love to consider those. Because obviously, we're spending a lot of money on our property. Uh, as you talk about, you know, the timing of things, I mean, you guys are becoming drainage experts because you're, you're very astute when the, you know, we're a very small part of the watershed. So most people, most high, you know, engineers would tell you, hey, your water is best to get out early. So when the rest of the flow comes down from Pine Island Bayou, comes down from Boggy Creek, that we're not combining flows. Now, the good thing is our engineers know how to do control structure design. And when the water is high in the receiving stream, almost no water gets out of the detention ponds. They just continue to fill up because they're designed to work with a head condition. So you gotta have a low tail water in the stream or the water can't go through the, the pipes. So I know that's getting ahead on some of the questions that you have, but that's, you know, a good engineering design understands that when the water is high in the receiving stream, really almost no water can come out of the detention ponds. So they just continue to, to stack more water, you know, to end up filling up your freeboard area. So, so, but you guys are gonna have the opportunity to review all that in detail. Because you require the plans to be submitted to see exactly how it's gonna work. And, and we welcome that because, you know, our, our engineers, you, you may think they're loyal to us. They're not. You know, their, their requirement is to protect the health and safety and welfare of the general public.
And who are your engineers?
Elevation Land Solutions and Preston Hajalaw, is your, your consultant.
And where are they at?
Um, they're out of Conroe or, uh, the Woodlands. And I think Preston is out of, um, somewhere in South Houston. And the review team that's reviewing the work, I think, is LJ A. And I think the team that's reviewing it is, is also out of Houston. So very sophisticated firm. You guys have an excellent consultant that you use. Uh, one of the best in the industry. So they're, they're, uh, uh, they've looked at this with a fine tooth comb and, and, but like I said, any ideas that you guys have, um, or if you wanna challenge them to come up with creative ideas, um, I just know our team does that a lot for us. They figure out really creative ways to solve things. And you've gotta kinda zoom out and look beyond the limits of property.
Well, I think, I think that's where we're at. I think that's why we took the steps today to revise our subdivision policy. It's because of these type of events. You know, we, we may have to get stricter to offer better protections and assurances to our citizens. So when they go to bed at night, watch rain and they can really sleep through the nap.
In our request to y'all, as, you know, as the, the, the public body, when we, when we do something, we, we do think it would be good to increase the standards. Um, because we don't wanna, you know, be living, living to a higher standard at higher costs than everybody else is doing the, the paramount. So you've already done things, I think, to increase your rainfall from, you know, the twelve inches up to almost seventeen inches, which is Atlas fourteen, which is a, obviously, everybody's doing that. But your requirements on detention and how you do that, I mean, that's all on y'all's purview to decide what you wanna do as development moves forward in, in the county.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This gentleman wanted to say something. Did you wanna speak?
Yes.
I live in, um, Timber Creek.
Come on up to the podium, sir.
Right here.
Come on up to the podium here.
Uh, excuse me, I'm rambling around. I'm used to this. So I live in Timber Creek.
Yes.
And after forty years, I've only had seven foot of water in my house. Oh my, this lasts right, then. I don't wanna see that again. I'm too old for this. But all the water runs down like this gentleman said, everything he said was right on key. Boggy Creek, I live a hundred yards from Boggy Creek, or less than a hundred yards. I saw it five foot over that bridge. And I drove down to Callahan the other day. That's not far from me.
Yes, sir.
So, but the water all runs to the ocean. And when it hits the Natures River, it starts backing up, as we all know. Pine Island, Boggy Creek, it's got nowhere, it can't get out. Then, Dam B opens up. I hadn't heard it mentioned at all from the Natures River. And then on top of that, Sam Rayburn opens up. And it, it, when they get full. So everything heads right down here and then the water that backs up all the way to their development. And, um, I just don't wanna see that happen again. And there's n- there's not much we can do about the opening the gates. They got their regulations. That's federal.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I, it's the way it is.
Yes, sir.
You know, I certainly don't wanna, I'm not against development. I'm just against another flood.
Yes, sir.
I can't.
That's human.
You know, they got a long range deal. I won't live that long, but it's, uh, it's quite a problem. I, and I see no, how you, I don't see how you can resolve it, you know, as far as getting the water off, keeping it from flooding and, and area, area.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see if we knocked off some of these other questions whenever. Uh, I, I don't remember if you answered the question about ponds that are already, are y'all gonna keep watering those ponds all the time, like lakes?
So there is a, without boring everyone, there's a, there's a difference between the definition of detention and retention, D and R. Uh, we will have retention ponds, meaning that we intend to keep some amount of water in the bottom of those ponds. Uh, for aesthetic purposes, maybe fish, a little fishing camp or, you know, different reasons. Uh, but those ponds will have the capacity for detention with a D. Um, it, 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 it'll be like a conservation pool, which is like the normal maintained water level. And there'll be a control structure that if it rains a little bit, it drains out and it just stays at that level. Then if it rains a whole lot, that control structure basically gets inundated. It goes to the next control structure, which would be the, the detention portion of the pond.
Uh, in the, uh, public meeting that we had in June, you mentioned something about that water being metered down to Boggy Creek. Can you kind of explain that a little better? Because that is a lot of the questions that we had was asking about that.
Sorry, thank you. I, I, I think that's a specific question, actually. Um, but if you want me to jump, I think that's number fifteen. I can jump to it. Um, and, and I may have misspoke. I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I may have, I may have used an, an artful term when I said metered. Um, the, uh, my engineers explained to me that detention ponds are not monitored or metered, so my apologies. Um, the control structures essentially are, they're just clever devices that automatically control the outflow of water. So whether that's the size of the culvert, if, if, if you're familiar with how, how pumps work and head pressure and, you know, if you try to push water up a hill, it doesn't really work that well because you've got pressure pushing it back down, that type of thing. So you can constrict the size of those, of those, uh, structures such that water only flows this way when the pressure on the other side is that amount or below, right? So it might drain if the, if the creek is dry. And let's just say, uh, by some miracle, water only fell on our property. So only our detention ponds needed to be emptied. And the creek was otherwise dry. Well, then it would flow out at a relatively high rate because there's nothing in the creek. There's, there's no water in the creek already. But if, if it had rained everywhere and water was rising in the creek, there would be pressure on that end of the pipe and restrict the flow of water from our detention ponds out. And we would continue to build water in our detention ponds. So there's, I mean, it's fairly complicated. Uh, it's all engineered and there's, you know, it's in the details of the, the drainage study, but uh, there are all these clever devices that kind of operate under certain conditions. And when conditions change, it goes to Plan B. Plan B being in the plan. I don't mean as some plan that, you know, I'm saying there's like staged exits of water, if that makes sense. I think that's, as a non-engineer, the best I can explain it, but if you need someone.
There's no guy with a HOA or a county commissioner or anybody that goes out there and cha- and, and manually does this?
There is no three mile. No, there's no three mile island control center with, you know, video boards and people watching it. No, it's just, it's built, it's a static kind of device that works on its own.
Dan gates or anything like that?
Yeah, I, I, again, the details are in the drainage study. I, I, I don't know how to describe all the facilities, but.
No, there, there, there is nothing that is manually controlled.
Okay.
And I have never, um, seen anything that's manually controlled on a gravity system. You know, you do have gates and things like that when you have water supply. You know, when you're trying to decide whose field's gonna get water, you know, seki is and things like that. But on detention and drainage, it's all fixed structures that are designed to perform in different headwater and tailwater conditions.
No pumps either.
No pumps either, yeah.
Okay, I, I think I'm on to sixteen. Who will regulate the water? So I think we just answered that. There's, I mean, I mean, the, uh, the, the county and the city will review the plans, our construction plans. The construction plans are, you know, when built to spec, they will do what, what I'm talking about. And that's really it. The, the, other than maintaining those, I mean, if something gets broken, we fix it. But other than that, there's no, there's nobody that has to run out there at three o'clock in the morning in the pouring rain and do something. Number seventeen, uh, developer claims it would meter, release water. Would the county be responsible for monitoring? Okay, so yeah, the answer we've just covered. Number eighteen, who is going to be responsible for maintaining the detention ponds in the development? It is the HOA responsibility. The developer, sorry, number nineteen, the developer stated that they would be able to meter the flow. I'd like to know how this would be possible. Uh, so, uh, will they build a dam? Is it approved by the Corps of Engineers? So I think we answered that. I mean, there's, it's, it's detailed and it's in the drainage study.
Now, the Corps does have to look at it, right? Even though our engineers look at it?
TCEQ is responsible. They, um, will have a form that they have to fill out and follow TCEQ saying who is responsible for maintaining it.
Number twenty, what will happen when this quote conceptual idea, close quote, of a drainage plan fails for this project? Who will be held responsible? Um, basically, the people who created the plan and reviewed the plan. So that's the city and county officials, the professional consultants and engineers. Um, all this is built and designed by professional licensed insured engineers. Um, so, uh, that's who would be responsible. Number twenty-one, who would be responsible to clean out the creeks so the water can flow more fluently? Um, so thi- this, I think, addresses a lot of what Commissioner Roberts is, is referring, has been, uh, referring to in his comments. Um, and, and maybe it's an opportunity for me to make a sort of restate something that I tried to express in the June fifteenth meeting, uh, and maybe I'll try to say it a little differently. Uh, we're, we're not in the flood control business. That's not what we do. Uh, what we're trying to do is have a positive impact on the flooding situation. But we're not here to control the flooding of Harden County. That's, that's beyond our capacity. Now, as, as my consultant, uh, mentioned a minute ago, we are willing to consider creative solutions to help more than we are already helping. But, but we're not here to stop flooding for everyone i- in the room. I, we, we just don't have that capacity. We don't have the, it doesn't matter, there's not enough money with the, if you saw the map. We are such a small part. We can't stop flooding in, in the watersheds. Uh, but we're doing our part. We're going beyond what is our part. And we're welcome to do even more if there are some creative solutions we can write out.
On, uh, twenty-two.
Sorry, to answer the question, to clean up, that would really be city and county officials that might have the, I, 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 I'm not putting it on you, but that's beyond any one landowner can do. It's, it's, it's a government, uh, challenge to tackle.
I would say the same thing we've said before. That's up to a drainage district to, to handle that and, and we don't have one, so. On, uh, twenty-two, if you don't mind, I'll take that one for real, real, right quick. And it, uh, just talks about that y'all had already started doing some work out there. And we talked about that in the public meeting. And that caused a lot of citizens to come back on us and say, well, y'all are having these, uh, public meetings with the developer and acting like nothing's already been approved. But it looks like it's already been approved because they're out there working. Can you describe what kind of work you've been out there doing or what you haven't been doing and, and, um, talk to us about that?
Sure, thank you.
Make sure the public is aware.
Right, and.
First of all, have we approved, other than, uh, Ms. Young did say, state earlier that, uh, she apparently approved for y'all to install a culvert under, uh, County Road out there. Has the county approved anything else? Y'all had also talked earlier about an approved drainage plan. That has not come to the commissioner's court. I just wanna make sure that that's all on the record.
Yeah, so.
We have not approved anything yet.
Understood, thank you. Um, I, I think it, to go kind of in reverse order, the approved drainage plan just meant that the, the engineers responsible for reviewing it had approved it. So that, that is not the county approval. We understand that there's a difference. So that may just be, uh, a use of a casual term when a specific term would have been better suited. And I would just say, as far as the comments from the public meeting, that was my fault. I misspoke. Um, we, we, we weren't digging our detention pond already. What we have been doing for some months, and when we bought this property, before we really had any sense of how we were gonna move forward, we were contacted by more than one dirt pit contractor. So it's common. You see this all over the area. People dig up dirt and sell it and deliver it to other sites where construction's taking place, highways. The school district, I think, has taken some of the dirt from our borrow pit. And so that's called a borrow pit. We hired a contractor to start digging and they pay us a royalty. It's a nice way to make a little bit of money. And our thought was, well, where do we locate it? Well, we're not really sure, but the land kind of told us a good location. And as we started to develop, as started to think about how we might develop it, we thought, well, this, this dirt pit that we can dig might someday be converted or convertible into part of our drainage system. So we were intentional about where we located it, hoping that maybe someday strategically, this might be in, in a good location to turn into a, a hole we already needed to dig for a detention pond. Then we go, maybe move these guys to some other place and keep digging and keep paying us money. So we hired the, we hired a contractor to start digging a borrow pit. And whenever we submitted our plans to the county for approval of the, uh, of the development, we suspended that excavation. Now, there has been some activity on the site because it's, as you know, it's been raining a lot. It's been a wet year. Just to keep, you know, whenever it rains.
Twenty-two thing, it's been raining.
Yes, sir. Uh, whenever it rains, dirt moves around and it puddles and blocks things. So, uh, as I understand from my contractor, and I had grilled him more than once over the phone, are you sure you're not doing any more excavating? And he said he would swear on a stack of bibles. He has not even, not even turned over his dump truck. Now, he's been doing some bulldozing and some other maintenance issues to keep water flowing off the property so it's not pooling and ponding. And that includes, you know, keeping that pit empty of water. And so like I said, there's, there's just been some maintenance issues that he's had to do. And he's also continuing to maintain, sorry, to maintain, uh, Temple Road. And I, I don't know if anyone in the room, you're welcome to go down there. I think it's public access at all times, but they have been maintaining that road with a true maintainer for all of this year. And it, it looks really pretty good. I mean, if, if you've been down Temple Road and seen it in the, in the bad days, it looks much better now. They're, they're doing a good job maintaining it.
Now, my wife and mother-in-law are very upset at your contractor for not keeping four twenty-one clean. And it's been muddy. And my mother-in-law nearly had a, had a near miss with a dump truck who wasn't paying attention with no flaggers on the road because I got chewed out by my mother-in-law that day about putting people out there to flag. So if y'all could pass that along, that would be really good. I love my mother-in-law. I'm gonna continue to get along with her good. And this will help me.
That's good politics. Yes, sir. I'll, I'll mention that to the contractor.
And I do appreciate the contractor, um, trying to fix things up whenever I contact them about, um, you know, whenever they're hauling in and out, it tears it up. It's been raining every day. We had an incident last week where they got a fuel truck stuck out there. It's been raining every day. We had an incident last week where they got a fuel truck stuck out there. And in the road. I talked to the contractor and they have, you know, tried to maintain it as, as much as they can. It's a bad road. It's wet all the time. Anytime it rains for days on end.
It's nothing but four-wheel drive trucks.
All of the, the rocks and anything that we've put out there, it, it has disappeared.
Yes.
And that happened to the contractor the other day too. And, and actually, they, they scraped down with a bulldozer and found three by five rock we put out there a few years ago. And it sunk down two and three and four feet in the ground. And they didn't find all of it. They just found bits and pieces of it.
Sure.
But the other day, they put in asphalt on the top out there trying to, to make the road passable again where they were working. And it's all gone. It's already sunk. You can go out there right now. It's gone. It sinks. I've been trying, you know, I've, I've told people this for, that's why we never could do anything with the road. That's why we never could do, make a road in there. You can't even make a road bed. The road sinks. And that, she, she and I and Alex went out the other day. We hadn't been in a four-wheel drive truck. Could we have gone down the road? No. And this was not, this was not during a rain or, or right after a rain. This was what, a day or two after it rained. This is all the time in there. Yeah, granted, they, they have done a pretty good job maintaining the road as it is. But it's just almost impossible feat. And that comes from me having to have tried to maintain it when we had it open for two or three years.
So to make a all-weather durable road out of what is Temple Road now would, would take some work. It certainly can be done. It would, it would take more investment in engineering than has been given to it so far.
Well, appreciate y'all doing that.
We are, we are, we are for hire. So we, we can certainly have conversations about that. I mentioned a three eighty-one agreement earlier. That would be a perfect example of how those tax funds can be used for a specific purpose. If y'all wanted an asphalted road, something that shed water and was always drivable, it's certainly possible. It is not impossible. Twenty-three, why is a developer diverting all water to Boggy Creek rather than utilizing Black Creek and Boggy Creek? There may be a good reason for this, but it was not explained and it does not seem logical to add more to Boggy Creek. So as we, we discussed a couple of times already today and we discussed in our June fifteenth meeting. We are cutting in half the amount of water going, or the rate of flow going into Boggy Creek. It is true, and if, if we wanna go back to that exhibit that I showed on June fifteenth, I can. But our, what we call our northeast drainage area, and if everybody kind of remembers the color-coded topography maps and how we, you know, water flows in all these different directions. You might have remember seeing all those blue arrows. And we, we, because of those other things going on besides just the lay of the land, there's, there's pipeline easements and all kinds of encumbrances on the property. We did, we did take a small portion of, of area that naturally flows south to Black Creek. And we're gonna essentially turn it around and flow it into Boggy Creek. After it goes through all of our detention facilities, right? So yes, it eventually makes it to Boggy Creek. But it's not a hot shot. It gets slowed, it'll be, you know, days probably before that little section. And I, I don't, I don't know, five hundred fifteen acres is that drainage area that we're proposing? And I wanna say it was less than ten acres was the portion that would naturally today flow to Black Creek. Everything south of our northeast drainage area, which is, you know, a thousand acres, let's say. Will continue naturally flowing to Black Creek until we get down there and have the resources to put in control structures and detain and slow that water down. It would still go to Black Creek two or three days after it otherwise would, because we're gonna slow it down the whole way with our, with our drainage improvements.
Do y'all have that drainage study up on our website?
On your website?
On, do y'all have a website if our citizens wanted to go to and download or look at your presentation?
No, we, we do not have a website. And I, I would recommend that if you wanna post that, you know, we've submitted it to you. And I, I don't think it would be a best idea to have a bunch of different copies. But really, you guys ought to review it and decide, is it something you wanna change or do something different? But, but if you guys wanna post that, we have no objection to that. I mean, when we give it to a public entity, we're, we're putting it out to the public.
Okay.
Yeah, that may help, I mean, for citizens to go back and look at.
I don't think we have it electronically. I think the flood plan administrator has a hard copy of it. I don't think we have that electronically.
We submitted a hard and electronic copy to their office. Yeah. If he doesn't have it, we're happy to send it back over, but you should have it already.
Thank you.
Number twenty-four, so this, this Commissioner Kirkendall, I think, hits your point in front of the head. I would like to see exactly how the drainage will be improved. The part, the problem is the explaining in layman's terms thing. So if you post a drainage study and, and we welcome you to do that, there's a lot of detail in there. So I guess maybe just be prepared for a lot of questions that it, it, there's, there's an easy way to explain it and then there's the drainage study. It's very detailed. It, it took many hours and a lot of money to put that thing together. So I, I'm not sure how you dumb it down, I don't say, I don't use that term. How you simplify it to layman's terms, but I think, tell me if, if what I described earlier about the pipes and the sizing and the water in the creek. If that wasn't layman's terms enough, then I'll try some more. But that, that's about the best as I can do it and I'm a layman.
You know, it may, may be worth it if, if moving forward, if it helps with people understanding of hiring someone to put it in layman's terms. As maybe a click with a pop-up box. So if you're looking at retention ponds, you put a question mark or whatever, if someone has a question, they go click on it. Pop-up box comes up and explains it in layman's terms. And then that way it's a one-stop shop. And people who don't do this every day can have a better understanding through layman's terms on what that means.
Okay.
You know, I don't know. It's a little more work on y'all's end. But as far as communicating with the public. And obviously, this is a very hot-button issue for us. That may help.
Yeah, let us take a stab at it. I, I'm not, like, I'll, I'll make them take a stab at it. We'll see if we can simplify it. I mean, it, it, it's, it's really as simple as you dig a hole in the ground so the rain can fill it up. And then you let that water out slower than it otherwise would run across the ground. But we'll see if we can compartmentalize some of those steps.
Well, and there may be firms who've already done a YouTube video or something, that you do a layman's term and then a link to the video. To show the, how a construction of a type A, type B, whatever thing can do and they click on it and watch it and go, okay, I get it.
That's a good, good idea. Thank you. Let us look at that. I think we've got a couple more questions. This, these last three fall under miscellaneous. Has the developer conducted feasibility and impact studies to substantiate whether current drainage and traffic management infrastructure exists to support such a project?
I think you answered that upfront.
Yeah, so we did do the drainage and there's also a traffic study. So those are moving forward. Number twenty-six, looking at their photos, I cannot imagine that anyone else but the owners of those properties have access to anything. Including our city park. What happens then to our kids and us? Will we still have a city park? So it, it is true, we own land that generally surrounds the city park, but we have nothing that we will do or restrict access to citizens to enjoy the park. In fact, we're gonna build a lot of parks within our subdivisions. And whether somebody wants to walk past a park that's next to their house and go to some other park, I, I really don't know. But I, I, I think that there'd be, certainly, we're gonna bring more people to the area, so there probably will be more people at the city park. But I think there'll be a lot of people at our parks too. So there'll be no, nothing we do to restrict access. Last question, if not developed by, by this developer or some other developer, what happens to these tracts of property? Will it be maintained as a tree farm or other agricultural use? Will it be divided and subdivided? And I would say we don't have any specific comment about what other people might do with the property. But it certainly is, is possible that it could be subdivided into smaller tracts and developed differently than how we're proposing.
I, I do have one question about that too. How long ago was it used as a tree farm?
Well, I don't know that specifically, but I, I, when we bought the property, you go through all these old deed records and things like that. And I can see, sorry, Southern Netches Timber Company being involved in things as far back as the thirties, nineteen thirties.
Right, but the last years that it was ever harvested or used?
When was the last harvest?
Yeah.
Well, we've done some harvesting.
Well, no, I, I know about y'all's harvesting. When I'm talking before y'all came on the scene, when was this property last used as a tree farm?
Well, we purchased it from Four Star Corporation, which is a.
Right, true. I understand that.
Lumber, lumber company, timber company, sorry.
Who had not used it for several, several, several years, apparently.
Not to my understanding.
Okay.
I spoke to some of the foresters that are on their staff when we bought the property. We always get a stand map that has all the history. I questioned them about some of the tracts when they were planted and what species they were planted in. They were actively managing it as a tree farm.
Okay.
I would say for a hundred and fifty years at least.
Okay.
I had some notes, jotting down along the same lines as Commissioner Roberts just asked. You personally, and let me say this, you handled yourself very well under adversity here today.
Thank you.
And at the other meeting, you personally, how long have you been involved in this big project?
Are you just referring to the?
I'm talking about timing coming to somebody's mind, purchasing a property, whatever. Whenever it started, how long you been involved?
Well, when, when we purchased the property, I was involved at that time.
Okay. And who was the first person you contacted that lived in Harden County in reference to this?
I have no recollection on. I have to go back and look through my notes maybe. First person I contacted in Harden County about purchasing the property?
No, 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 about the whole idea. Not necessarily the property, couldn't be the property, but anything involving this project.
So.
You personally, who was the first one you contacted that lives in Harden County?
I, I, I'm sorry. I don't think I understand the question. What would I have contacted them about?
Anything. What, your idea of purchasing the property or what does the property look like or? What, how much is a cup of coffee at the restaurant? I don't care.
Yeah, I didn't buy it sight unseen.
No, no, no. Who was the first person that lives in Harden County that you talked to about this project?
Yeah, I, I don't recall.
And at what point?
I've talked to a lot of people, so I, like, so.
And I, I, I understand. At what point in the whole operation, you personally, not the company or anything else. Did you realize it was gonna be as much opposition as you're up against?
Relatively recently in the overall scope of, of the, I mean, I guess it depends on what you define as opposition. Commissioner Roberts made us very aware of the level of opposition some months ago when we met. At, at, when we were, I don't remember what we were doing with the drainage study or some other, other meeting we had months and months ago. But, and there's, obviously, there's free advice all over the place. So I've heard this and that, but I, I don't know. I don't know how to.
Can you remember, can you remember the first time you were made aware? That this, this was gonna be some opposition to this? Either emails, talking?
You know, it all just blends together. It's, it's a rolling snowball and like I said, of input and you have questions asked. So I don't know that I can really answer your question probably in the, in the accuracy you're looking for now.
So going back to my first question, you were involved in the original purchase of the land?
Yes.
Who's, who's idea was this?
Which idea do you mean? The purchasing of the land?
I don't have any other questions, sir.
The subdivision. To his concept.
To build residential on the property?
Correct. The concept, that the conceptual plan of coming in and building a upscale subdivision. I guess what Commissioner Cooper was asking is, whose idea was that?
When you bought the property, was it with the idea to, to just work a working tree farm or to develop a property?
Yeah, so we purchased the property as a tree farm and were prepared to continue to manage it as a tree farm. But felt that it had a higher and better use, at least in portions of it. And it was the group of investors that they bought.
I just have one other thing to add. Sure. So if the vote was today, be- because of the, of our citizens' voice, it would probably be unanimously no. I don't even know that we could get a motion and a second on this court. Just me thinking out loud. The statement has been made to us that you hope we disapprove it so that you can sue the county, so that the county can build your subdivision. Is that a true statement?
I have no idea what that means. I've never heard anything like that.
Okay, 'cause that's, I've heard that. And then is it your wish that, that we do disapprove it so that you can sue us?
No, definitely not.
I got, going back on what you said though, I wasn't the first person that you heard there was any opposition from. Well before you ever met me or talked to me or even brought anything to us to even look at or see. Y'all went to Lumberton Municipal Utility District and had a meeting down there. And I was not there, but it was overflowed with citizens voicing their opposition to it. And trying to tell you what it was going on, what was gonna go on with it. Those are the same citizens that have followed this for the last two years, two and a half years. I don't know how long it's been. But that was almost a year before you ever talked to me. So your first, first inclination there was gonna be opposition to it was not from me, but from the citizens themselves. At the Lumberton Municipal Utility Building when they had that meeting. I just wanted to clarify that also. I, I hadn't even been approached with anything about it. The former Commissioner Pelt, who sat here beside me before Amanda, had not been approached, did not know anything about it. I can tell you, he was to, he, he told me head up, he was totally against it at the beginning. He said, why didn't they come talk to us? I said, I don't know. I had to go talk to Lumberton Mud first. But we did not know about anything until over a year after y'all approached Lumberton Mud. And that's where you first learned about that opposition. It wasn't from me. I wanted to clarify that.
You're right, thank you. I, I, I had misremembered the timing of things, but you're right. The, the public meeting at the Mud was, there was definitely opposition expressed there. Thank you.
Mr. Young, anything?
No, sir.
I just want to add that another public official, not a county official, asked me last week, why in the world are y'all putting them through all this? Y'all have never done this with another developer. And I think one of the other commissioners mentioned it earlier. It's because the citizens want us to go through this. They want, I said it earlier, they're scared. You know, they have lost all of their belongings at least once, some of them more than once. And so they're scared that another development coming in is going to cause them to flood either more, you know, increase, with more increasingly, happening more often. Or worse or whatever. And I'm just trying to, the, the reason for this workshop today was to talk about these lingering questions from before. And to convince us and the public, why building however many houses are in phase one will not cause more flooding on the neighbors that live on Keith Road. And in that surrounding area, including Rose Hill Acres, Pecan Park, all, all south of, of Lumberton down there. And I just haven't heard that yet. You know, I just haven't heard the answer to that question. How are we going to assure our citizens that if yes for this development to go in, which will, will just be one phase at a time? But we know it's a master plan community and we, and we wanna make sure that we are looking at the big picture. How can we assure the citizens this is not going to flood them? And I just haven't heard that yet.
Okay, if I may respond to a couple of things there. If, if everybody in the county built a really big hole to capture some rain, it would make an impact on flooding, right? That, that, I think that seems common sense. And if they built an even bigger hole, it would have a better impact on flooding. So we're, we're doing that. We can't prevent flooding in the watershed because we just aren't big enough. We can't do enough. If we took the entire three thousand acres and dug it thirty feet deep, it wouldn't stop flooding. We, we, we just don't have the means within our, our, you know, our.
I think that's a very, I mean, you're honest. I agree with you a hundred percent. And, and maybe that did answer the other question. You just said we're not gonna be able to promise you, is what you just said. And you're not. And nobody else, no other developer is either. I'm not just throwing that off on you. You just made an honest statement.
We can't promise you we'll have a flood again. I, I made this comment in June fifteenth meeting in that slide that showed how small a portion we are. We're just, we're a snowflake in a, in a blizzard. So what we can do is be responsible for our property. And what impact we have on flooding. And we can go beyond it and we promise to do it and we are gonna do it. And that's costing me more money, but I'm willing to do it because I wanna be, we want to be a good partner. And we're gonna be here for a long time. We'll maybe not be citizens, but we're gonna be members of the community for a long time here. We wanna be friendly and professional and follow the rules and help where we can.
And you have been friendly and professional.
Yeah, and I appreciate.
We appreciate that, yeah.
I appreciate you indulging me. I don't, it's not my. I appreciate you indulging me, I don't, it's not my pressing, but I do have a vote, so thank you.
Thank you, and if I, if, if, if this is a sore point, maybe I should address it, um, to the court. If, if, if we didn't reach out to specific individuals soon enough, or before we reached out to other individuals, uh, I'll just chalk that up to, uh, just a human error issue, or not understanding how things are done in, in these neck of the woods or whatever. Um, the, the project, the development project, the, the, the tree farm project was existing and could have, could have gone on in perpetuity. To do a higher and better use would have required understanding how we might get water and sewer into this area. That was a mud question, and before we could get an answer to that question, nothing really mattered, right? It was just a tree farm until we had a mechanism to get water and sewer in. And so we went to the mud first. And, uh, so if we should have broadened our reach, then that's, that's just a simple, uh, mistake that we made in terms of relation building or whatever, and I apologize for that, that's just, that's just an oversight.
Uh, one last thing that I want to bring up, is I learned, uh, last week, and Alvin corrected me earlier, that this, uh, development, all of this is in the Beaumont ETJ, are y'all aware of that? The extraterritorial jurisdiction?
I don't remember.
So, I want to make sure, I learned of it last week, and, uh, I want to make sure that y'all are, are aware of that and that y'all, I have also got to go through the city of Beaumont, and, uh, talk to them and get their blessings and go through their, whatever their procedures are to get this approved there as well.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure you're aware, and make sure the public is aware that we all now know this. Alvin says he told me a year ago, I don't remember that. I'm sure he did, if he says again.
I know the feeling.
And so I want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Appreciate you, appreciate y'all's time.
If they want to speak.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Afternoon.
Evening.
Good afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to say a couple of words, and I appreciate, uh, the courts, uh, taking this matter very serious. My name is Jim Philp, I live at seventy-eight sixty-six Beaumont in Lumberton, outside the city, in the camp, Pecan Park. Um, just want to say, like many of the people maybe in the room, that, having, uh, served my community and also, as many of you have, paid for your residence for the last twenty-seven years, I haven't done so in which to begin to continue to flood due to development in my years where I hope to stay at home a little bit more. The studies unfortunately that are done on the drainage, not because it's maybe by a third party or an engineer, when you're standing at your home with seven, five, eleven feet of water, you don't really care about what engineering studies have occurred in the past. You don't care what a person that has spent a lot of money to develop something has, uh, has a report in their hand. All you know is that your, your stuff is flooded. That is why your court is having to deal, as you know, with that kind of thing. I believe that the county will have to deal with this in almost every development that comes soon in the county. That's unfortunate because that's, that's a bit unfair to, you know, but it's, it's the nature of it. I am not in favor of any single drop of water being added to Boggy Creek. I know that sounds very unrealistic, but it is what it is from the Y south. Uh, it's going to become more prevalent, as has been talked about, in the center of the city of Lumberton. No, no disrespect to the city of Lumberton or the nature of the geography there, but they don't keep their water. They can't keep their water. We know where it goes, we knows where it's headed, it's headed to the ocean, as the gentleman pointed out. Saying that it's a small development to the people that have flooded before is not an accurate way to gain their support because we have to be concerned, what about the next development? What about the next development? Is everybody just going to keep adding water to Boggy Creek because it's convenient, because it's there? It's because it has to be done, whatever the cases are. Part of what has been addressed in the drainage study that was brought out at the last meeting was the difference between when you concrete something and when you just let it percolate in the soil. I still understand, though, that if we're concrete and that water's gonna run quicker, if it's captured, retention or detention, in some respects doesn't matter because what hasn't been said yet, and the developer cannot control this either, but it will be a reality. If they hold their water for two to three days, great, because it's not adding it to that system. Our reality is, is in two to three days, when they had to release water from the dam, their water is gonna get added to the dam water. And being that it's a very small-sized property, probably a drop in the bucket. But again, I'm not up for one bit of water being added to Boggy Creek that doesn't have to be added to it. So I appreciate your indulgence in listening to me today. I really appreciate the court's work on this issue. It's probably taking up a lot more of your time than maybe it ought to, but it is appreciated by the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Alvin?
If I can just, uh, perhaps respond to that, uh, concern or question briefly. We talked about it a little bit before, but again, it's, it's active life conditions in the creek that determine how water is used, our detention harness. So, again, nobody has to go out there at three o'clock in the morning in a, in a rainstorm, it's just gonna work. It's designed to work. And so if water's coming from Dam B and that's spilling up Boggy Creek, then the water will, it'll get slowed down. That's just how it's built to work. So I hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Had motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, saving the back permission of Cooper to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
For our adjourn, thank you everybody for your time and everyone who showed up. Thank you all very much.